I'm gonna call the meeting to order by welcoming you to the December 12th meeting of the Camilla City Council. I'm gonna ask the acting clerk to call the row.
Councilman Campbell.
Here.
Councilwoman Willingham.
Present.
Councilman Jenkins.
Here.
Councilwoman Tweedy.
Here.
Councilwoman Smith.
Present.
Councilman Danny Paul.
Here.
I'm gonna ask you to pause for a moment of solid prayer in recognition of the seasons that we are celebrating. I want you to reflect on those seasons and meanings of those seasons. Stand for the pledge.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, the one nation, under God, and the gospel, with the paper to its best to serve all.
You've had time to consider the minutes of the last meeting right here.
I'll make motion to approve. Second.
It's been motion and second that the minutes of the November 14th meeting should be approved at the end of discussion and correction. All in favor? Opposes the November 14 minutes are approved. We have a report from the administrative committee.
Council reviews proclamation to recognize and honor the Westwood Wildcat Football Team who defeated the Memorial Day Blue Thunder Football Team to win the 2011 Georgia Independent Schools Association Class A State Championship. This is the second consecutive perfect season of a 13-0, which extends their winning streak to 26 games. The administration, I'm gonna ask that everybody just stand, the administrative committee recommends adoption of proclamation and declares December 13, 2011, Westwood Wildcat Football Team Day. Congratulations.
I'd be honored to suck at that.
It's been motion and second that December 13 be the Westwood Wildcat Football Team Day. Does that end the discussion?
We have the proclamation. You wanna help someone read it?
You wanna read the proclamation? Okay, you can read it.
Whereas on November 25, 2011, the Westwood Wildcat Football Team defeated the Memorial Day Blue Thunder Football Team at Centennial Stadium in Camilla, Georgia by a score of 33 to 21 to become the undisputed 2011 Georgia Independent Schools Association Class A State Champions. And whereas, under the ordinary leadership of their head coach, Rich Ross Washam, and his staff, the Westwood Wildcats have provided great thrills and excitement to their many fans during their second consecutive perfect season of 13-0, which extends their winning streak to 26 games. And whereas, the Wildcats' victory has given cause for such much enthusiastic celebration and will be remembered and cherished for many years to come. And whereas, the students, faculty, and community of Westwood Schools are justifiably proud of these fine athletes. And the city of Camilla wishes to join with them in recognizing their outstanding and historic achievements. And whereas, the mayor and council of the city of Camilla do hereby congratulate the members of the Westwood Wildcat Football Team on winning the 2011 Georgia Independent Schools Association Class A State Championship and do further commend this fine group of young athletes for the competitive spirit and sportsmanship they have demonstrated, both on and off the field. And now therefore, be it resolved that December 13, 2011, declare Westwood Wildcat Football Team Day in Camilla, Georgia. And witness thereof, I have, it will be signed by the mayor and the acting city clerk. Congratulations.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Oppose the proclamation passes? We usually, Mr. Gerard, go have to come up here. I don't know if it's too many to come, so maybe he can place you.
I'll put him on the steps.
Okay. What we have with us tonight, Coach Ross Washam, Coach at least, we have the senior players, Mason Washam, Douglas Nobles.
Stand.
Well, turn around so you can get on the camera there. Caleb Morell. Miley Anderson. Dylan Smith. And Ethan Lambert. Congratulations. Did you have anything to say, Coach?
Hey, we sure appreciate you guys doing this for us. It means a lot to our football team. And, you know, we talk about all year, whether last year and this year, the special memories that they've made and the opportunities they had. And, you know, even when I'm saying 50 years from now, even if you got all timers, you'll still remember, you'll still remember these state championship games and the special years that they've had. So, it's a great group of young men. They've worked hard and to achieve what they have. And I know they'll, they're going from here and they're doing much more important things than play football. And hopefully this will help them to get to that point in their life. And we appreciate all of your support and that means a lot to us. Thank you very much. Thank you, guys.
Council discussed the resolution regarding signature authorization for banking purposes. The city will add City Manager Bennett Adams at this time. Vernon Twitty Jr. will be added effective January 9, 2012, after he has been sworn in as mayor. The administrative committee recommends adoption of the resolution. This is a motion.
The motion is second that we adopt the resolution authorizing changes in the signing of the bank cards. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Opposes the resolution to change the signatures on the bank card. Pardon?
Oh, okay.
Manager Adams discussed a request from Georgia Municipal Association, GMA, for the Georgia Employees Benefit System, GMEBS, Life and Health Program that restates their services provided to City of Camilla employees. City Attorney Coleman has reviewed the trust agreement, ordinance, and participation agreement, and recommended the mayor to sign all documents. The administrative committee recommends approval of the documents, waive the second signing of the ordinance, and authorize the mayor to sign. This is the motion.
Second.
The motion is second that we approve the changes of the Georgia Municipal Association Health and Energy System. Oh, no, I guess it's second, it's mandatory. Is there anything you would like to add, Bill, about the changes?
Nothing other than what we're going to discuss in the work session, Mayor. Thank you.
Any other discussion or question about the benefit plan? All in favor?
Council had the first reading for the Enterprise Zone Ordinance at the November 14, 2011 council meeting. The purpose of the ordinance is to create proper economic and social environment to induce the investment of private resources in business enterprises and service enterprises, stimulate growth and development for the community. After the second reading, the administrative committee recommends adoption of the ordinance. This is a motion.
Second.
The motion is second that we adopt the ordinance, establish the enterprise zone. Is there any further discussion?
My guess for public information, Bennett, give me a couple of highlights on that, of what we can hear from new businesses located in Camilla.
Thank you, Councilman Twitty. What the council is doing tonight is actually adopting an enterprise zone which will encompass all of the city limits of Camilla. As we have development occur within the city, you can go back and designate those particular areas as opportunity zones. And once you do that, the businesses coming in will be eligible for some tax credits from the state of Georgia, $3,500 per employee first of the year. As a good possibility, Walmart will be able to utilize this as they develop their property because they are removing some buildings that are not being used at this point, replacing it with very nice stone.
So, it's the incoming businesses, they'll go back and try?
Right, unfortunately, it's not retroactive. But if an existing business expanded their employment base, they would be eligible for benefits with the new employees.
Any other questions? All in favor? Oppose the ordinance for the enterprise zone passes?
Council reviewed the list of the 2012 applications for beer, wine, pool table, and game machines within the city. Chief Volson has reviewed the list favorably. The administrative committee recommends approval of the list of applicants as presented for 2012. This is a motion.
Second.
The motion is second that we approve this applicant for 2012 beer, wine, and pool table. Is there any discussion about this?
I think it's the same as this 2011, except that I think there's about four or five new managers, but that's the same as that year.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposes the 2012 beer, wine, and pool table list passes? Do we have a report from the Public Works Committee?
Yes, we're doing that. City Manager Adams reviewed a poll attached from the driven from Electric Cities of Georgia. ECG will contract the city to inventory the poles, city's poles and replace approximately 100 poles over the next year. ECG will be responsible for getting all other lines off the poles. This would be a great support system for the electric department and customers as well. The projected cost for the year is $10,627.90. The Public Works Committee recommends approval of the agreement that authorize the city manager sign. This is in form of a motion.
Second.
It's been motion and second that we approve the agreement with Georgia Cities for pool table attachment. Do you want to just give a little brief overview?
Give us a little information. Okay. Is the council aware, we're in the middle of a very aggressive pole replacement project. It's gonna be replaced approximately with 100 poles this year and replace the light number last year approximately 100. We still have some poles from last year that do not have all of the other utilities off of them, whether it's cable or telephone. And those poles cannot be removed, even though they've been replaced, it cannot be removed until those other utilities are taken off of them. And what this contract will do is the Electric Cities of Georgia has a group that will, that's what they will come in and do. They will focus on the poles that are still in place because the utility has not been taken off of them. And they will do the same thing for the 100 poles that have been replaced this year. And it is, it's gonna make that replacement a lot easier. As I pointed out in the work session, as long as those poles are still up, regardless of their condition, the city owns the poles. And if something happened, we would be liable for anything that might happen, you know, due to a pole falling or something of that nature. So, it's in the best interest of the city to get those poles out of the ground as quickly as possible. And this, this will help the electric department do that.
If ECG will actually do the removal?
No, they will not. Our folks will be doing that or someone we contracted to. But they will, they will keep up with the utilities that are still on the existing poles. And, you know, I mean...
They will facilitate the removal and then a reattachment to the new poles, is that correct?
Well, they probably, certainly, they're probably gonna reattach some new poles fairly quickly. But sometimes, you know, their little lax of getting the utilities on, you know, a little slow getting them. And that's what this will really do. It will focus on those poles that have already been replaced and get those other utilities off those poles so they can be removed. And as you know, our utility, really, of most of the departments in, well, obviously all of the departments in the city are pretty lean from a manpower standpoint. And as our employees in the electric department are doing other jobs, this is something that, I mean, this is not a critical issue as far as the service delivery. So, it's something that, you know, they might not be as aggressive doing just because they don't have the manpower to do it. And this, and this is a one-year contract. So, if we accomplish what I hope to accomplish this year, we would not be probably contracting this service next year.
Bennett, for substance information, if they see a new pole that's been replaced and another pole right beside it may be leaning or, you know, the older pole, and it's, the reason is that the other phone system or some other utilities have not removed them and they gotta do their part before we can finish. So, it will be done later, but it's not, was not forgotten about.
Right. Okay. Again, this will, this contract will facilitate getting that pole taken out that's already been, that's been replaced.
Any further discussion or questions? All in favor? Opposes the agreement for the pole attachment pass?
Manager Adams also discussed a rate increase for CNS customers. The cost to rebroadcast has gone up substantially. The cities of Tefill, Moultrie, and Cairo are also looking to increase their rates. By raising the rates, the cities are simply passing along part of their increased cost for rebroadcasting to their CNS customers. The basic entertainment would include a $2 increase from $16.95 to $18.95. The super basic would include a $3 increase from $52.95 to $55.95. Digital Gateway would include a $3 increase from $54.95 to $57.95. Digital Basic would include a $3 increase from $59.95 to $62.95. Digital Supreme would include a $4 increase from $69.95 to $73.95. Digital Supreme Plus would include a $4 increase from $78.95 to $82.95. Digital Supreme, Super Supreme would include a $3 increase, which would be from $86.95 to $89.95. Digital Supreme Entertainment would include a $4 increase from $92.95 to $96.95. HDTV would decrease, that was decreased by $6.95 from $12.95 to $6. DVR would include a $2 increase from $10.95 to $12.95. HBO would include a $1 increase from $12.95 to $13.95. HD, DVR, Showtime, Starz, Cinemax rates remain unchanged at this time. The Public Works Committee recommends approval of the CNS rate increases as presented. That's in form of a motion. Second.
The motion is second that the CNS rate increase could be approved as presented. And this city manager, because I can hear the people out there oohling TV name, he's saying that this is the pass on.
This, that's correct, Mayor. The, Councilman Campbell read in his recommendation, CNS Community Network Services is charged a rebroadcast fee by the local broadcast channels as well as the sports channels. And this is just passing on that proposed increase. Our CNS customers will get a letter probably later this month that explains that and also explains we're getting some new HD channels, expanding our services. And they'll get a brochure with the new rates, a new channel alignment, and also a notice that these rates will go into effect with February 10.
So, the old challenge will come off, but just the new challenge will be added?
Right. Go ahead.
I'll come in. We're still substantially lower than the competition.
That's correct.
About $10, $10 to $12, $15 for each category.
That's correct.
Right. This is a pass through that, you know, that seems like we're gonna have to do this every year, unfortunately. And it's just something we got to pass on down the line. It's just something we gonna have to pass.
Any other discussion or questions? All in favor? Opposes the CNS rate increase upon the pass?
Council discussed a resolution that authorized the mayor to sign documents pertaining to the local loan modification documents for the original $10 million loan through Jifa for upgrade on the wastewater system at Equity. Two things the modification will accomplish are, number one, change the repayment loan date, and number two is recommend the loan agreement. Equity is responsible for paying this loan. The Public Works Committee recommends approval of this resolution authorizing the mayor to sign modification documents and all other documents related to this loan. Second.
It's been motion and second that we hand into a resolution to change the agreement, the agreement with the applicant for the loan. The original loan from discussion was $10 million, right?
That's correct, Mayor. The loan, the amount of loan is not changing, as council is aware. The length of the project is extended farther than originally proposed, and this is just setting some dates in 2012 that the loan, we're paying construction interest on the loan at this point. This new revision to the loan documents will set a date in 2012 where the principal payments have to begin. And it's either, I think it's May 2012, the drawdown of all funds or the completion of the work, the work on the project or the three triggers that would start the principal interest payments. We're paying interest on the loan at this point.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposes the agreement on modification pass?
The city of Camilla will be executing three contracts to construct the T-hanger, taxiway, T-hanger, concrete slab, install mandatory airfield signage at the Camilla-Mitchell County Airport. The Public Works Committee recommends that the city manager Bennett Adams be authorized to sign all documents for the DOT airport project. This is in form of a motion. Second.
The motion is second that the city manager be authorized to sign the contract for the DOT airport project. Explain to us again what the...
This, this particular project will be for the grading and site work for the T-hanger, the taxiway, and the concrete slab. The, as the council discussed in the work session, and I have confirmed with our consultant and DOT's aeronautics crew this week when we met with them and Randy Poole, our airport manager, we will be remitting the hangar itself. And there's a couple of modifications that are gonna be made that will hopefully bring down the price of the hangar. We are gonna really try to get any local businesses that can bid on this to make sure they have an opportunity to bid. Ms. Cross and I both spoke with them today, and I answered some questions they had, and that the new specification should be available next week. And the bids will be open January 10, I believe is the date that they'll be open so they can be presented to the council at the February meeting.
Bennett, on the new hangars now, the ramp will, off of the new hangars will offset some of this money that we're gonna be spending over time.
And in talking, in talking with our airport manager Randy Poole, he already has four of them rented.
Right.
And that's, that's, that's good.
So, these are in addition to what we already have?
That's correct. And we'll also be looking at some additional, we redid our five-year capital improvements program also during that meeting and shifted some projects around. And we're gonna try to get, build some more taxiway and some more ramp. You know, that's a seasonal issue, but during hunting season, since the length of the runway has been extended, we have more flights coming in at times that ramp's full out there. So, that's a good problem. It's not a problem, it's an opportunity we need to address.
Any further discussion or questions? All in favor? Opposes the recommendation relevant to DOT airport project passes?
The city of Camilla council members discussed the purchase of 200 KW of MEA Power Project One nuclear and coal-fired generation assets from the town of Branson for a lump sum fee of $140,000. Camilla will begin receiving the entitled generation output from the 200 KW effective January 1, 2012. And this IPT entity entitles Camilla to the energy output and related cost responsibilities for the 200 KW for the remaining life of the generation assets. The Public Works Committee recommends approval of the power purchase from the town of Branson and authorize the mayor to sign the contract. This is in form of a motion.
It's been motion and second that we approve the contract to see the Branson's purchase of power. This city manager is explaining why it's necessary for this purchase.
Okay, Mayor. The, right now, our power, the city of power generation, generating assets that the city owns are slightly below what our peak demand is through the year. We have a peak in winter and also during the summer, and it's approximately 900 KW below. Our generating capacity is approximately 900 KW below what we are called a, those peak towns to provide. This purchase will go toward resolving that problem. Right now, when we get to a certain point, we have to buy power in the open market, and it's more expensive than if we own our own generating assets. And that's, that's what we're gonna do again, trying to reduce our power over time, our cost of power over time by purchasing these assets.
Any other questions? All in favor? Opposes contract purchase power from Branson passes?
The city of Camilla council members also discussed the purchase of 200, I mean 722 KW of reserve capacity from the city of Moultrie for a one-time payment of $3,504. This IPT reserve capacity purchase allows City of Camilla to purchase the 15% reserve capacity policy required in MEA power for the calendar year 2012. The Public Works Committee recommends approval for the power purchase from the city of Moultrie and authorize the mayor to sign the contract. This is in the form of a motion. Second.
The motion is second that we approve the contract to purchase... The motion is second that we approve the contract to purchase, also purchase power from the City of Motry. Is this the first?
This is the second piece of the answer to our proposal, uh, as I stated, under the last agenda item, we were about 900 KW short of what we need. The purchase of the 200 is a permanent purchase kilowatt from Brinson. This is a, a one-year purchase from the City of Motry, and, uh, the maximum cost will be $3,504. I think the cost, uh, per kilowatt is $4.85. Uh, if we had to go out and buy that, again, we had to go out and buy that on the open power market, it'd probably be twice that high. So this is just putting, uh, Camilla in a position where when we handle the demand that gets up to our peak, that we had, uh, last year in the summer, the winter peaks, we'll have the power there available at a, at a reduced cost because of this purchase.
We're not necessarily buying the power from Motry, but we're buying the access to their reserve, is that correct?
That's correct.
So if we don't need it, we won't be buying it.
That's correct.
Just gives us access.
That's why I mentioned it so much for kilowatt. It may only be 2,000, but we do have it available if we need it.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Your recommendations for the one-time purchase from the City of Motry pass?
Uh, that concludes your call from Public Works.
Um, City Attorney, do you have any report?
I don't know of anything. I talked with Mr. Coleman this afternoon, and Adams, I think, I don't know of anything. He didn't know anything to take, because it seemed like everything was in control, and they all did a good job with these agreements, so, that's the take.
City Manager, you have an additional report?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, the, I just wanted to, uh, get the feedback from the city council. There'd been some discussion about, uh, perhaps not having the December 20th work session, uh, during our previous work session. Do you want to, you all want to take action that night, or wait and see later in the, in the week before you...
Really? We got any visions that needs to be done?
The only thing we're going to have on the agenda right now would be, be financial things.
Unless, unless needed, I'd say let's, uh, let's, uh, roll it off.
We can, we can, Council pending, pending EP.
Right.
Pending, in urgent action, we need to look at.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
The motion that December 20th, work session be counsel pending, uh, necessary action that needs to be taken. Any further discussion? All in favor? December work session will be canceled. Um, Mayor's announcement, this is, so, work session be canceled here, and I have a couple of type of items, and the first one is, uh, to, relevant to the Mayor's Motor Cave, which I'd been making appeals. I would like to thank the groups that worked to make donations. First group, and primarily to thank the City of Camilla employees who answered the call to give $11 in 2011. The second group is Worshams Class at Westwood Schools, and, uh, I'm not sure which class it is, I apologize if I have the wrong class, but we think it's the second grade class, but anyways, it's Worshams Class at Westwood School. And then the Robert Justice Post of American Legion. These groups work together, and we had a nice group of, uh, items to take to Southwest, and they really appreciate it. Now, I thank firefighter Robert King for, uh, doing the drive down. The second announcement I have is to those who've been calling and asking about the CHIP program. The CHIP program, of course, is in swing. We're at the stage now where they're doing, they call it environmental, and picking up in, I think probably February, you'll be notified as the next stage in the CHIP program. There, uh, there was, um, there is still in process, and maybe the city manager next week can pick up on it, but the last city manager left, we were working on a proposal to change the utility payment. They used to have that status, dates for paying your utility bills, that people could actually choose the bills, and hopefully this would do away with the issue of the deadlines. Now, with Kathy having become sick, that will probably be delayed now down to maybe the summer or the spring, but it is a proposal that's on, on the table. The next item I have to announce, it was the independent committees, you know, it's working to save the Georgia B. Williams Nursing Home. The committee is still working, it's accepting donations and sponsoring. As you remember from the last announcement, the home has been placed on the National Register Historic Places. That work had to be suspended for a while because the chairman, Ms. Bristol Thompson, died, so she's in bereavement, and hopefully that'll kick back up in January, but, uh, and when I'm, no longer on the council, I intend to devote more time to that, uh, to that project. With cold weather coming, I'm going to ask, uh, maybe Ms. Willingham, who's reactive in a faith and church community, to see about working with some of the churches to maybe provide some kind of temporary shelter for the homeless when the temperatures fall, uh, on the freezes for long nights. And the last announcement I have, which piggybacked on way off of the first item that took place tonight, we, uh, congratulate Camilla native Ricky Parker, who is known as official as Eric Parker. Ricky is a Mitchell Baker graduate, and his football team won at, uh, Burke County, won the state's championship, uh, Saturday night. So we congratulate Coach Parker. I forgot to ask Coach Worshams, they might have been teammates here.
Uh, they were close.
Yeah.
Uh, he was, he had an assistant too, I believe, was Mr. Williams from Camilla-Mitchell Baker. I forget his first name, but, uh, I think they both played on the 92, 93 teams, somewhere along the way.
They were the 83 team when they won the championship.
We had Coach Burke County.
Yeah, he was on Mitchell Baker's 83 championship team, Coach Parker was. So those are the all announcements that I have. Any other bids to cover for the council? Hmm? He said he was on the team with Jane Jackson. Any citizen presentations? A motion to adjourn? The motion that we adjourn all in favor? I guess I say to all the mayor officials and to all the people.